A call to order the study session for Cherry Hill Village. Councilor Wheel has just stepped out. He'll be in momentarily, so I think we can go ahead and start though if you'd like. Anything you want to take up?
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. The 75th Anniversary Committee co-chairs are present tonight to ask City Council for feedback on a historic article that they would like to run in the Villager newspaper this year, so for 2020, and to request funds in the upcoming 2021 budget. When City Council approved the resolution establishing the committee, the term limits were set to dissolve after the final event in 2020. So if Council would like to extend the 75th Anniversary Committee's term limits, staff will bring forward a resolution, an amended resolution at an upcoming meeting. Included in your packet and on the screens before you is a preliminary budget the committee has provided for your consideration for events in 2021. With that, I'll turn it over to Co-Chair Thomas Berry and Co-Chair Dino Maniatis to explain the anniversary events the committee has discussed to date. So if you want to come up to the podium.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you for having us. So in considering this, we're requesting, there are two components that we're requesting initially. The first is the $10,000 budget for the coverage of the Villager newspaper, a series of historic articles, the first of which will be a front-page coverage in the Villager newspaper and four pages inside the newspaper, the cost of which will be around $7,000, according to the initial meetings that we've had with the Villager newspaper. And as we'll cover here in just a few minutes, there'll be a follow-on for 2021, 75 plus one. Want to go ahead and, why don't we move on to the 2021 events, which Thomas will cover?
So as we all know, our big old plans for 2020, as many plans have this year, did not come to fruition. So we have had multiple meetings, the 75th Anniversary Committee, trying to figure out what's the best thing to do. Ultimately, we just feel like we would still like to celebrate the history of Cherry Hills Village and have these special events and keep the momentum going that we had built this year. We're just going to carry it into 2021. So we can run down through what we're proposing here, which is kind of the big scale. There's a lot of TBDs here, a lot of things we'd still need to figure out, but we wanted to make sure that you all were happy with the direction we were going. So one thing that we thought would be kind of neat is to establish kind of an event presence setup, which means that the 75th Anniversary Committee would be present at any events or things that are going on in the village next year. So instead of what we had originally proposed for 2020 was two events where we would be present, we actually would be present hopefully at more different, more events, all the little things that go on in the city, whether it's the car show, whether it's movie night, that type of thing. The 75th Anniversary Committee will be there, will be kind of like your local historian group that are just promoting the things that we're doing and sharing information and communicating with the citizens. So with that, we thought a little bit of a budget for next year. We'd like to maybe look into some sort of a 10 by 10 canopy, and this could be something the city already has, we're not sure. But basically, just a little setup where we have a table, we've got some materials, some imagery, canvases, photos, things of our historical past, maybe some print materials and things that we can hand out to the community at these events. So a little bit of the budget towards that. We still would love to do the time capsule idea. We hope that, you know, there was a lot of interest in that. We thought it was going to be something really fun to do at the John Mead opening. That didn't happen, we'd still love to do it. So we've basically taken that little budget and put it forth to 2021. That could happen here at City Hall during any one of the events that are going on next year. We could just tag on to that somehow. Maybe if there's a Hutto Commons event or something, we could tag on to that. Then going into what Dino was just talking about, with the Villager marketing, we want to kind of create a lead-in or introduction to what we're doing here this year, but then next year, the newspaper marketing would really tie the events together and it would have more specific stories, really dive into specific times, periods of history in the village, and then tie it into an event that's coming up. If you want to speak to that at all, Dino?
Right, and so the idea is to allocate about 40% to this year's event because it is the 75th, and if I can, we can reference Exhibit B. Here are a list of topics that we've come up with that might be suitable for a Villager newspaper article this year. And then the remainder of that will be in 2021, there'll be a series of articles, and again, there's, as Thomas had mentioned, there's a few items that are still to be determined. But suffice it to say that we are going to have, we'd like to have, a series of articles that lead up to these events, so it's still fresh in the residents' minds. If we do it, you know, six, eight months from now, they're likely not going to remember the articles that were published in 2020.
So from there, we would like to lead up into our big gala dinner. We had proposed a detailed plan for an event at the Country Club this year. That didn't happen, and now we've run into a new issue going into 2021, is that the Country Club is going under construction, won't be available for in a venue of the size we're looking for. So we're currently looking at new venue opportunities within the city, and we, that's why there's a lot of TBDs here. So that's something we're going to be working on as, over the next couple of months, is kind of narrowing that down as to where we would throw this event. But we kind of captured the cost breakdown of what we were planning for this year and just moved that forward. That's where we came up with that budget. Now, please keep in mind, obviously, that's a large sum at the bottom there, but we are anticipating, we are planning to sell tickets, or to, what's the correct terminology?
If it's included in the budget, you can sell the tickets. It's just, we didn't include revenue in the 2020 budget, so we couldn't call it selling tickets. We had to call it a donation. Since the revenue, we weren't, at the time we created the 2020 budget, we were unsure what the committee's plan would be, since the committee hadn't been established yet. So we didn't include the revenue portion, we only included the $15,000 expenditure portion. So if it's budgeted for in 2021, then you can say selling ticket.
Yeah, so definitely that will be the goal, is to subsidize the event with ticket sales. So that would round out our event, or the 75th Anniversary Year of Little Events leading up to that gala. We don't know if that would be an August event, or a fall event, or even something near the holidays, maybe in December. So those are all to be determined, depending on what's happening in the world.
Would it be the past Saturday? I've locked up on my calendar.
You're right. Yep, that would have been fun. So that's kind of just an overview of what we're thinking. Obviously, I know there's a lot of details left out there, but that's kind of the great, the grand, the big picture, so.
Sure. Questions from Council? Council Blum?
Question is, if we had it this year, like last weekend, I guess, were we looking the same type of budget for the dinner?
It is, it is the 2020 budget.
So that's consistent with what you guys had talked about in the past. And then in addition to this, you want to do the article in the Villager this year. And what is left in our budget for this year?
The committee hasn't spent any of the $15,000 that was included in the 2020 approved budget. Staff has included a $10,000 line item in the forecast that I've provided to City Council every time, knowing that they had intended to come forward and ask to spend 10,000, at least $10,000 for the article, in all of the forecasts that have been presented.
So if we were to allow them to do this article for 7,000, we could put 8,000 into next year's budget?
Correct, it would be absorbed by 2020.
You don't anticipate any other expenses this year?
We do not, no.
Thanks, guys. Is the committee pretty well set that this is the, this is the drill right here, and you don't see it changing?
We certainly have flexibility, specifically the budget, the items that are contained within the gala dinner. We have some flexibility. I think that when we put this together a few months ago, we went, we were a little generous with the cost, just in case. So there is some flexibility, depending on if there are some specifics, maybe the gift bags, miscellaneous expenses, but to answer your question, there is some flexibility there.
I'm just curious, what have other municipalities done to celebrate notable anniversaries? Similar to what you guys are thinking?
Nothing quite as elaborate as a gala dinner of this nature.
Yeah.
They've been more, larger, because, you know, cities of Denver, Aurora are larger cities, so that's, it's more of a generic, this is more of a specific, you know, higher end. We were planning two events, one for a John Mead Park-a-day informal event.
Right.
And the other was, was meant to be a historical, you know, a historic-centric event with, you know, commemorative mementos, historic coins, write-up and so forth. So it was meant to be more specific, whereas some of the, to answer your question, some of the bigger cities, it's not, doesn't have that level of detail and that focus.
So what are you going to do when 400 people want to buy tickets?
I think it's possible that we could now have 400 guests, because the Country Club was only able to accommodate around 200. So depending on the venue, we'd be happy to have 400 guests.
Yeah.
I mean, the larger the celebration, the more inclusive it is. Of course, it's advantageous for us to include as many of the residents as we can.
I'm just curious, anyone have any idea how many residents go to the barn party?
Yeah. It was, it was six, I think there's like 400 to 500. Yeah, no, they do advertise outside of the city.
Yeah, I just can, and you're paying $150, right?
Yeah.
For that event. I anticipate that you could have a big following, so, consideration.
Yeah, definitely, we'll be considering that as we look into venues. We did feel that there was a lot of interest, you know, there's a lot of things we can do in terms of exclusivity and selling tables for groups to come together, families. There really is lots of opportunity there.
Are you going to do anything in our City Hall, as guests come in, as people come in to see the different clerks? Is anything going to go on there, onto the walls?
We have been in conversation with city staff about a list of, well, the time capsule for one, and the other idea was to, to print 10 or 12, or however many is appropriate, historic photographs of the city and have them on display on an easel board with a description, a caption, that would be on a, you know, 60-day or 90-day rotation, the logistics of which we still are working out.
Great, thank you.
Do you mind if I interrupt real quick? Dan has a question, and to answer his question, what he is looking at on the screen right now does not include the $7,000 for the historic articles that the committee would like to run in the Villager this year. So it would be $7,000 in 2020, and then the total budget at the bottom, which is the $43,500 in 2021.
Yeah, so can I jump in here? Can everyone hear me? Is that, can anyone there hear me?
Yes, we can, thanks Dan.
Okay, hi, Mayor, members of Council, staff, and 75th Committee, thank you all. I'm sorry I can't be there with you today, but I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. The 43,000 at the budget, on this budget, does not include in the staff communication, it talks about a $7,000 cost to run an article and send it to all the village residents. So that, 7,000 would be in addition to the 43, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and then my only suggestion or question I might ask, and hopefully it's something we can find out from Bob Sweeney or someone over at the Villager, but I got to think that, I don't know, Mike Gallagher, what do you think, a quarter of our residents get the Villager already? We might be able to somehow come up with a list and cross-reference it and strike a whole bunch of people and save, save a few thousand dollars on that mailing.
I think it's important to note that it not only covers the front-page coverage, four pages inside the newspaper, but also it is mailed to every resident of the village. So there's a $1,500 to $1,800 cost for that.
Okay, yeah, I was just saying that, you know, if half of our residents already got the paper, I don't want them to get two of them, because we're sending it out to somebody that already subscribes to it anyways, is my point.
It's our understanding that it will be only mailed one time to each resident, to each household.
Okay, great, I'm enjoying it, thank you, go, keep going.
Senator Brown?
First of all, thank you, and both, and your entire committee for the work that you've put into it, and I'm so sorry, kind of after all that, it's still ongoing. I, in regard to the first question about extending the terms, obviously, I would be very supportive of that, and hopefully everyone on the committee is interested in continuing. I know that's maybe more of a commitment than everyone was thinking of, but hopefully that's the case, so I'm certainly supportive of that. I think these proposals look fabulous. I really like the fact that you're trying to do something, what we can, in this year, and agree that, you know, we'll move off what we have to move off, and we'll just kind of do our best with it. And I don't think I had any real suggestions about the other components, except that when you just mentioned, you know, the photographs that you'd have printed, we do have, we had installed, you know, an art display system out there, with the idea that we might have rotating art shows and things, and maybe that would be a great way to use some of that stuff. And then you can also take it and use it at your event presence booth and whatever, but we could display it in the halls as well for some period of time, and I think that'd be a great way to get double use out of those same things. So thank you, thank you for everything. I'm excited to attend when we can actually attend.
Senator Wheel?
There we go. Thank you. A couple of, a couple of thoughts, the, as you think about the table and what you might put on it, along with the photographs, there's the, the book Closina wrote, High on Country, which might also be one that, you know, could be offered as well as a part of this. It's not particularly 75th-specific, but at the same time, it really goes back to the beginning of the city and pictures and words, brings it up to date, actually goes even further back, geological history and all sorts of things. The, the only other concern, question on the events, like homeowners association, picnics, things like that as well, for this 10 by 10 tent, and making an appearance at those sorts of things, or just city-specifically sponsored functions, what do you have in mind?
I think we're looking to tag on to city-sponsored events, so we're just part and parcel with any of those, and we have a presence, and people get to know our faces as they come to these different events through the year. We just kind of tell a story throughout the year, and there's consistency there, so leading up to that gala. So by the time they get there, and it's a good point, by the time we get to the gala, there should be enough interest where we may be able to get 300 to 400 people excited to come and join us, so that's what we're thinking.
Okay, and then on the numbers, it seems like, if I have them in my head correctly, $7,000 spent this year, 8,000 carry forward. We've got about $8,200 in the first three items. So by the time we get to the gala dinner, I think it's important that the committee be super sure that, you know, the ticket sales and number, quantity, and times price, going to total that to something greater than the expenses, or, because I don't think we want a $35,000 surprise at the end of it, even though it's a very worthy cause. And you guys have done a great job of putting together, I think, a very comprehensive and high-quality program. But that, oh, and, final question. If you advertise in the Villager, the Villager goes beyond Cherry Hills Village as well, right? Greenwood Village, other places, so are you intending to open this up to residents outside of Cherry Hills Village, people who live outside of Cherry Hills Village?
I mean, it would be open to everyone, that we obviously couldn't specifically exclude Greenwood Village, but it would include everyone.
Well, I don't have anything against Greenwood Village, I'm just sort of an open question.
I mean, the intent is to celebrate the history of the city of Cherry Hills Village, and those that are interested. Now, of course, there are other, there are people that live outside the village that are interested and have a history, used to live here, family, so we, I mean, we would welcome the opportunity to bring people from outside the village as well, which of course would be better, it would have, it would have mattered for the bottom line.
Sure, it'll help the numbers, absolutely. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question about one of your questions, Randy?
Yeah, sure.
So when you were talking about the budget, and I do agree with you, but I wanted to point out that in their estimates, at 200 guests, they're, they're really only expecting to bring in $30,000, which would mean that that would be an additional 5,300 that we would be, and I noticed that and was okay with that. What I just heard you say was that maybe you're not, I want to make sure that we're clear and giving clear direction, so I just wanted to clarify whether you're all right with that.
Yeah, I did not catch that part of it. The, the thing that I'm hoping for is not some major adverse budgetary surprise. That's, that's really, really it. So will it be exactly to the penny? No, but, you know, hopefully it's more on the favorable side than the unfavorable side, and if it's unfavorable, it's not very, very large.
Ultimately, where we kind of came to these numbers was that in 2020, we were allocated $15,000, and our goal was to, you know, do the similar type of events and bring in enough revenue, so we would just essentially use up near to that 15, similar to here, because our net, if we do sell 200 tickets at $150, is 30, so our net out of 43.5 is 13.5. So essentially, we plan to use about 13, 15,000 of actual budgeted funds, where the other, the rest is subsidized by the ticket sales.
I didn't get that.
Sorry. Out of the 43,500 that we're asking for in 2021, we intend to subsidize 30,000 of that at a minimum from ticket sales. So the, the net expense to the city would be 13,500.
Okay, so the intention?
If we host a successful event that we plan our planning.
Well, it would be, I think, that, that won't make or break the plan, but at the same time, it'd be nicer to be closer to zero on, you know, on the variance, because that's, that's building in an anticipation of an adverse variance to what's in plan, if I understood correctly. Maybe I didn't. We have 7,000 or so that we're carrying over to next year, or what are we doing?
Correct, it would be 8,000, so 7,000 would be spent this year, 8,000 carried over into 2021.
Right, okay.
And again, these numbers may change, you know, the ticket price that we had arrived at was 175, but because we'd like to be a little conservative with this, we're estimating this now at 150. And some of the research that we've done, we feel confident that we could sell 200 tickets at 175 because of the nature, nature of the event. So there, but again, there is, because now we are not able to host it at the Country Club, these may change.
Can I jump in quickly? I think, I think you guys, again, we're talking about something here. When I look at a thousand or $2,000 budget, first of all, thank you for putting this together, and volunteering your time. When I look at, you know, we're talking about 1,000 here, 2,000 here, but the biggest unknown with this is this gala. This gala, we want to make it all-inclusive, we don't want to exclude anybody that wants to attend.
Right.
To be honest with you, I don't think any one of us can answer that if this number will be 100 or 800, right? So why don't we take a approach that we start advertising, and people can go on a website, wherever, and we can say, you know, you can say, you know, these are one of the three dates. We don't know the venue yet, we don't know the exact dates yet, but if you want to buy your ticket ahead of time, we give you a 10% discount, whatever. And that way, the people that are seriously want to go and attend this, they're going to buy the ticket. So at least throughout this process for the next several months, you're going to know if there are 300 tickets that are sold, or there are two tickets that are sold. And then that way, we don't talk about a hypothetical, because on one hand, we're talking about 1,000, $2,000 here, when there is this, the majority of this budget is in gala, which is unknown. So I, I just think that we need to take a different, my suggestion is, take a different approach, try to sell these tickets early on. The people that are very serious, they will, they will come in, and we got to, then we have to make an assumption that maybe there is another 10 or 20% of people that have not bought their ticket, and we can allocate and come up with a better guest estimate of what it would be. But that would be my only suggestions, okay? So, thank you.
And I have a note from Counselor Sheldon in the chat, that he has some more comments as well.
Dan, do you have another question?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of other quick comments here, if everyone, if I may, and I don't know if this is the right time, venue to comment on the topics to be included in this, in this conceptual newspaper article, but, and if, if somebody wants to say now's not the right time and place, I will send these in to Emily, and you guys can coordinate them with, with the 75th Committee, and we don't have to do it right now, I don't feel like we need to do it if nobody wants to hear these.
All right, yeah, we can do that, Dan. We can have that, get it to Thomas and Dino. Send it to Emily, and Emily can get it out to Thomas and Dino.
I'm sorry, I, it's, that was real muffled, can, do you want me to talk, give me to speak to them, or now, or send an email in?
No, why don't you go ahead, Will? We got the time, we got half an hour, Dan, it's going to take longer than that.
Okay, they're, they're not long, they'll just take a second. So under that, under the Nancy Wyman-created topic points, the very first one, Cherry Hills Statistics, number four, number of parks in Cherry Hills Village, she actually doesn't actually state the number of parks in her response to that. She just talks about the trails and 20 equals 26 miles, she doesn't say how many parks are actually in the village. Under Cherry Hills Country Club, we might want to broaden that and make it clubs in general, talk about, I don't know why we're pointing out just one club in particular, but that, I don't feel strongly in the way. Under growth, zoning, litigation and flooding, number five, the Buck family lawsuits that turned out to be Covington, if we're kind of putting a chronology of events in there, I might suggest we put a date in there, in whatever year that happened. All the rest, 1 through 4, have dates next to them. And then I think a, kind of a bigger topic that we need to hit on, I think, under growth at least, is talk about public works and City Hall and joint public safety and Mead Park and some of the other things that have been developed lately, it's part of the 75 years, and I think it's important to touch on some of those newer things as well. And, Mayor, you had in your, you had in your opening remarks in the annual report?
Yes.
You had a couple of really good kind of things that have happened in the last year. Those are some other things that I might suggest you might put into this kind of communication if we are sending out an article to all the residents of the village. I think that one or two pages you had in there about things that we've done this year, South Suburban Final Payment, Public Safety, John Mead Park, the underpass of High Line Canal, sewer consolidation, code modernization, swastika acres elimination, burying of underground utilities, I mean, those are all pretty, I don't know, I mean, they're, they rank up there with a lot of the bigger things that have happened, I think, in the village, and I think those might be important to put in this article. So just, those are just my comments, I think that was it, so thank you for listening.
Thank you. We would welcome an opportunity to bring comments in, to incorporate them, and we will have a working, an updated version of this that we will be meeting about this Friday. So if there are salient points and historic milestones that you would like to have included, we would welcome, we would welcome any and all.
One came to mind, as Dan, Dan mentioned the clubs, and I think he's absolutely right, we should be comprehensive. Also, how's this of worship have played a role in the city's growth too? Maybe a topic that you want to address in there. Thanks.
And then, I hadn't looked over this all that carefully, Dan, so thanks for doing that. And just as you were talking, there was another school in Cherry Hills for some period of time, up at Colorado and Hampden, it's one of the churches now, so it'd be nice to cover that as well.
In our last meeting, we had discussed this, the article or the piece, the publication for this year would be chronological and touching on a lot of topics, and then next year, with the different series, we'd go into maybe more specifics or in-depth stories that then tie into an upcoming event. Broken up a little bit more. And just to touch on your comments, we are meeting this Friday, and what we were hoping for was to gather all this, this feedback from you all, so thank you so much. We'll be utilizing all of this to help strategize our plan of moving. We'll be utilizing all of this to help strategize our plan moving forward.
Credit to you guys, I mean, this, this is a lot of work, I understand that. You don't want, my only thing is, I don't want to, I don't want you guys to put so much time and effort and put a beautiful venue together, and then for some of the, our, you know, residents feeling that I didn't get to do it, I didn't get to go there. And, and that's really, to me, is, is the key, to somehow find a way what that two hundred number should really be to be on the safe side. And I just looked around the room, and I said, there are, you know, fifteen of us here, we come with our spouse, that's thirty, that's fifteen, you know, that's fifteen percent of the population of it, two hundred, so, you know, I think, I think that number of the people who are going to come and join this event is going to be much more than two hundred, but I don't know what it would be.
We hope, we hope so.
Yeah, so this potentially could be a silver lining, and it doesn't work out at the country club, and this might lead us to a venue that could welcome more, more residents.
Council Gallagher, did you have?
Nope.
Yeah, I, I agree with some of those comments, too, ATC, obviously, and the Village Club has a nice, interesting history, the clubs, I think, would include those. But I, my question, too, is, you're intending to serve alcohol in a ticket with this for that price?
That is correct.
Have you, for a hundred, for a hundred and seventy, if you're going to need alcohol.
Yeah, yeah.
How about for, for the venue, I saw you've talked about this, about using tents out here? Have you talked about using this site? Because the advantage of tents is, you can expand it, you know, endlessly and, and add people, and this is a kind of a, it'll be a new park, you know, it'll be something to show off. I don't know, have you guys, did your committee talk about that possibility?
Was the restriction to no alcohol just in Hodo Commons, or is that the park-wide?
It's in all city parks and trails, so it, it is John Mead Park and the Commons.
Yeah, so that was the problem, we ran into that, was we wouldn't be able to serve alcohol.
No alcohol in city parks?
No alcohol in city parks.
Yeah, because, yeah, I love that, we love that idea.
Unless you all can change that rule.
And it would have to be, well, it changed, or where is the park line, where is the line between the park and city hall?
It's basically the parking lot, unfortunately, yeah. When we rezoned the campus, it was really this building and the parking lot stayed C-one, and the rest of the park is O-two.
So the parking lot is technically part of the park?
As part of this building, or as part of C-one zoning.
It's part of this building.
It's, so if you wanted to serve alcohol only in the parking lot.
Would, would there be a way to, kind of create some sort of special event permit that would, that would allow that for-
That would do-
You would, you would need a special event permit just to serve it in the parking lot.
Right, but could we do a special event permit that would supersede the, the park?
No, because the, the restriction against alcohol in parks is in the city code, so unless council wants to change the code between now and then.
Okay, we'll work on that.
All right, any other questions? Not? Thanks for your work, guys, appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Good to see you.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments by council before we break, and read, come back here in twenty-five minutes?